Oh my goodness.
Hon time arrival. How little faith you have in me.
It's not that. Texts are stripped of context. There's not a lot of time. Just asking. I'm just asking a question. There's no malice.
I just sent you the.
All right, we are at seven o'clock. If everyone's ready to roll. Wonderful, wonderful. All right. And we'll be rolling in three, two, one. Good evening. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this evening's board meeting live and in the boardroom, our board members Eric Carter, Rachel Banks Cupshaw, Crystal Brocki, and I am Board Chair Tim Paulus. We are also joined at the table tonight by Superintendent Janowski and Board Secretary Laura Otternas. Thanks to everyone for joining us here live in the boardroom and our legion of fans on the YouTube channel. Thanks for being with us. All right, with that, we move on to review and approval of the agenda. First item up for bid. If anyone has any items they'd like to move or edit, otherwise we could seek a motion on approving the agenda. I will add, there is an item that I would propose we strike, and that is the board member work authorization that requires the full board to be present. And since we are missing board members Smieszek and Cole, we cannot vote on that tonight. So that is Section 6B.
I will move, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Ms. Brocki and a second by Mr. Carter. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The chair votes aye, and the agenda as amended is approved. It brings us to the next section, which is information and proposals, non-action items. Superintendent update.
All right, so we have three presentations for you this evening. Health Services update, back-to-school presentation and superintendent goals. I will be presenting just a brief overview of our back-to-school, a first draft of superintendent goals. And then, obviously, as we are in a world of health, health update from Dr. Mary Clarkson and the District Health Professional, Michelle Whiteside. Take it away, Dr. Clarkson.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Paulus and School Board members. I'm here with Michelle Whiteside, our new Health Services Supervisor. We are very excited to have her a part of our team, and we're here just to provide you some Health Services updates for the beginning of the year. We'll be covering our plans for the COVID-19 onboarding this year. Some new legislation that has been passed about having seizure-safe schools, or seizure-smart schools, monkeypox, and an update on vaccinations. So we're going to start with some updates on COVID-19. Each year since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, districts have been required to have a safe learning plan in place, and it must be reviewed and updated every six months. And as part of the updates, we are required to survey or gather input from our community on our safe learning plan. So we did this in August. We surveyed our community and actually received 226 responses, which I thought was pretty amazing. The largest percentage of the responses, 46%, wanted us to continue following our safe learning plan as written, follow CDC recommendations, and prioritize cleaning and communication to our families. So as part of our COVID plan for returning to schools and keeping the fact that we want our students in schools safe and healthy, we plan to continue to follow CDC and MDH guidance, and we know that changes often. And Michelle meets with them weekly. They have Health Services meetings weekly with the Department of Health. We will continue to communicate COVID levels by posting our community-level decals and recommended mitigation measures in each of our building offices for staff, students, and guardians. You'll see up here that this is, it's low, medium, and high, red, or green, yellow, and red. That will be posted along with, if you go to the next slide. If you go to the next slide. Thank you. A stop sign. So it will just keep posted in each of the buildings, the Hennepin County Community Level, and then the recommended mitigation strategies. Also, COVID-19 reporting requirements have been lessened by the CDC and the Department of Health. So weekly on our website, we will have the community levels, the red, yellow, green posted, along with the mitigation strategies. And then our reporting this year is cases by building, so we don't have to report individual names and all of that. So we will continue to follow on the requirements. Our Health Services staff will collect that information, will report it to Michelle, and Michelle will do the reporting to MDH. And we will continue mitigation strategies. So, you know, the big focus here is making sure that our schools are healthy places for students to be. So continued the hand washing, making sure students and staff don't come to school when they're sick, and cleaning our high-touch areas, along with all those others. The other thing that should be noted is that the state will continue to provide free COVID tests throughout the year. So all of our buildings are completely stocked with COVID tests that can go home with students or staff as needed. And how to become a seizure-smart school. So this was new legislation that Governor Walz had passed in 2021. And this legislation requires seizure training in all of our schools. It requires one staff member to be properly trained in seizure recognition and response and knowing how to use the rescue med. So that will be our Health Services staff person, and then also another, so there'll be two people in the building that have more extensive training. And all staff, including bus drivers, food service, and our facilities have also provided some training on seizure awareness to all staff. And just to give you a little background on why this is important, one in 10 individuals in their lifetime will experience a seizure. And one in 26 individuals will develop epilepsy. So that's a pretty high percentage. Here in Richfield, we have 19 students that have a documented seizure disorder. All of our students that have seizure disorders have a health plan that is monitored by our nurse. And we have 15 students who are at high risk due to diabetes. So we know that in every one of our buildings, there's a student that is experiencing either risks or seizure disorders. So it's important that we know how to respond. So this is what, a flyer that is provided to all staff so that they can have it in their rooms, so that they can be posted around, so we know how to respond should there be a situation in which they experience, a student or staff that's experiencing a seizure. Next is monkeypox. So this August, the Department of Health and Human Services declared monkeypox a public health emergency. Michelle and her team are in close contact with the Department of Health and continue to follow CDC guidance on how to respond. It's important to note that it does not spread nearly as easily as COVID. And the mitigation measures that we have in place for COVID also help prevent the spread of monkeypox. So we continue to wait for further clarification from CDC on whether there's any type of reporting, but we would treat this as any other health condition and just be aware and know how to respond should we have a case in the district, and we have not. And lastly, we know that during COVID, many of our families got behind on vaccines for their children just because the access to the healthcare wasn't quite as available. And so we are working really hard to help our families help get their children caught back up on their vaccinations. There's been resources, if you've seen them out on the website, they've been communicated out through our Communications Department to help students and families get access to shots, to vaccinations, so that we get our students back on their wellness, on their regular wellness protocols. So that is a big focus as we start the school year. We have a no-shots-no-school program that is through, thank you, Health Partners. So they can go into any Health Partners just to get shots. They can bring their students in for free. And then we also have the Richfield Health Resource Center that is also able to do vaccinations, completely free. And I also want to do one huge shout-out to our Health Services Department. They have worked overtime the last couple of years trying to support a healthy learning environment for our students and have done a phenomenal job. So these are just a few of our Health Services staff, and we are excited that they're all back and excited to be back and are ready to support our students as they come back to school. And with that, we are open to any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. We'll go through the board and see if anyone has questions. I will start with Mr. Carter, if that's all right.
That's fine. It's just weird being first. Thank you for the presentation. I have one simple question. For the seizure action plans, is the expectation that there will always be one staff member on site?
Yes.
So that, do we have to track that as well?
I have a document that has everybody tracked. So it will be our Health Service that are trained, and then also one backup person in each building.
Okay. I'm just curious if we have to think about, like, if somebody's not, you know, sick or something, that we have to make sure that the other person's free and available.
We do, I mean, we have to have people trained. We also have two nurses that are able to move from building to building should there be a critical situation. Michelle's always out in the building. So, yeah, we do our best, but I'm sure there could be an occasion, and at that point, we would make sure that we have health staff available.
We do have a float health para as well, and she is trained too. So there's actually three of us that are able to rotate.
Okay, great. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Banks Cupshaw, questions or comments?
Sure. So I know that we have provided COVID vaccinations in the past. I also know that monkeypox vaccinations are harder to come by. Is there a plan to provide those going forward?
I know that Hacer is having a COVID vaccine clinic over at Central, and then we plan on working with Bloomington Public Health to do our flu shots and COVID vaccines. And no plan in place as of now for monkeypox. We're still kind of waiting for MDH to give us more guidance.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Brocki, questions or comments?
One thing I wanted to share is I thought the back-to-school communication around public health and, you know, our safety plan that went out to all of our families was great. I appreciated when it went out, the level of detail that was shared. I just thought it was really thorough and a good sign of just the ongoing commitment to public health and safety that we have as a district. So thank you for that. This might be more of a question for the superintendent, actually, but I know in previous years, we've had policies in place to govern our response to public health issues, the pandemic, et cetera. And I think most recently, it was clear that you had the authority to make decisions as, you know, the colors may change from green to yellow to red. Are there any policies that we need to revisit because it's the beginning of a new school year? Or is everything updated and in place for this school year?
I believe, and I will have to double-check that prior to the next meeting, but I believe our policy used the wording around it being a state of emergency or related to the governor, and so I believe that policy expired.
Yeah.
And so we do have the ability to bring something back, but I don't believe we have anything in place that would be the same as emergency-level powers, so to speak.
Okay. Yeah, it's an interesting question whether there should be something sort of in between, right? Without it rising to the level of state of emergency, but still giving you some authority to make real-time decisions and not having to wait for us as a board to have a meeting to essentially approve things. So that's my only thought.
Makes sense.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any questions or comments, but thank you so much for the presentation. Nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a back-to-school presentation.
All right, so obviously, as you know, and I believe, well, I mean, I saw three of you at the buses this morning at Richfield Middle School. So we had multiple visitors at the middle school, a couple visitors at the high school. So our board present to share the start of secondary school today and elementary school tomorrow. And so just as we got in the habit of, just reminding us of some of the things that are in place as we launch our school year. And then we'll have things rolling out, like class-size reports and staffing reports and things of that nature as we continue to move forward. But obviously, as we just talked about health overall, I'll give you a quick summary again of our health protocols. We are continuing and will continue to follow CDC and Department of Health guidelines for COVID-19 and then also monkeypox. We continue to work with cleaning, hand hygiene, health checks, stay-at-home. We also have, because of our bond referendum, we do have air-handling systems that are up to speed with the highest levels of recommendations. As they talked about, we had seizure staff training. I mean, that's something new to come through the legislature. And then again, working on getting required immunizations to all of our students. So as we all know, that preventative healthcare didn't come out quite as aggressively as it had been in the past during COVID. And so just working to be as proactive as possible. One of the things we talked about throughout the end of our school year was what are the things we're going to prepare our staff with to start this school year? We've been talking about the themes of community, as we know, social, emotional health and building that strong, strong instructional and relational community within our classrooms and where our schools is important. It's one of the things we've trained and worked with all staff on. We also worked on equity and training in equity and also towards excellence, to make sure that our students are achieving excellence. As we talked about with crisis management and. As we talked about with crisis management and communication, all staff this fall receive crisis management training. We also worked on the equity guidelines. As you recall, we passed those in the spring, 106.1. We've trained all staff prior to opening day in our equity guidelines. And then each building and department has also some of their own goals, similar to the superintendent goals, which we'll talk about our first draft tonight. In our elementaries, which did not start school today, we are trying something new to really build a different level of community. We call them connect and assess. And so rather than a traditional open house where there is a large gathering and also individual teachers with students and families, there were one-on-one, very similar to conferences, both day and evening appointments provided across three of our days, focusing on relationship building and really connect, the connect part of connect and assess, working with parents as partners, families as partners, and also making sure that we really know our students and families prior to entering. And then also, in that time, where possible, we also did some brief baseline assessments to really help us both focus on that connects part and the relationship, community component, and then also excellence to help us get into instruction and instructional work as soon as possible as we launch the school year. And so we're excited to see, we'll do some surveying of parents and also staff to see how successful that was and see if that's something we continue to do in the future. In our high school, Spartan Camp is our launching event. So incoming grade nine students to RHS, we also had some of our new students come for building tours, teacher-led scavenger hunt. And then we also had, you might have seen the pink Spartan T-shirt across. I think it's Spartan Crew, and so that's our students who are trained to support the other new students to our building. Talked about what we're doing overall in the building, walked on a curriculum overview with our students and really set things up for what we had was a very good success today. You actually can see some photos of it online right now at NPR News. NPR was out with us today taking some photos and, and just sort of documenting this successful and exciting launch to our school year. And then at Richfield Middle School, as, as that's one of our large focal points, we had a large team there continuing to support, make sure we had a very smooth launch. There are grade level teams, and so we changed the staffing model to make sure that we are shrinking the communities. So there are two teams at each grade level, language arts, science, social studies, and math, two pairs of each of them. And students go with that team to really build that small community. So there are six teams across the building, and they are actually sponsored and connecting to parks in Richfield as, as their name. So really to create that larger community with, with Richfield. We did catalyst training, which is a de-escalation relationship type of a training about working with students and continuing to build community in a relational way in your classrooms. We're also working on two days of onboarding. Similar to Spartan Camp, we're doing that across the entire middle school for all of our students. We also had some behavior expectations that have changed, including digital hall passes to give us a better track, rather than paper, but actually doing it digitally. And then updated policies regarding cell phones, which aren't going to be used during the school day, and backpacks, where the goal is to really keep them in lockers to the greatest extent possible. We also have really expanded our exploratory options and are looking to build ongoing more physical and engaged exploratories, including adding dance and drama to our middle school to see if those are successful in, in engaging our students in a, in a different way within our middle school.
Steve, can you say more about the digital hall passes?
Yes, so typically, students have had a certain number of passes on paper. Now they are digital, which allows us to track who's where, when, and get a better database system of who might be missing class time versus a paper system.
But if it's not, it's not connected to cell phones?
It is not connected to cell phones, no. It is done on an iPad connected to the teacher or a Chromebook. So the teacher helps to monitor, they check kids in and out. But again, rather than having it on a pad of paper or on a slip of paper, this is done in a way where it now logs into a system for us. And then, across our entire district, some of the things new district-wide, we continue to work on standards-based grading, and that's one of our large initiatives, is to continue to focus on what do students need to know, and do they know it, and how do we effectively report that? We're using new data systems to track some of that called Who Knew It and Qualtrics, just to continue to expand our usage. Talked about catalyst training, but across all of our buildings, we're really focused on enhancing opportunities for social, emotional learning and elevating voice and valuing multilingualism to make sure that we are really treasuring all the value of our students' voices in all of the languages that they bring. Given the extended COVID funds and some of the funds that are specifically allocated toward extending time, we have a Director of Extended Learning to continue those partnerships inside of school, but also beyond school and in the future, and then also try and connect and assess as a way to start our school different in terms of relationships and the strength of what we're able to launch. And September is an exciting time. We're actually coming up on homecoming week before you know it with the parade and the football game on September 17th, and then Pen Fest within our community on September 18th. So a couple of large events, some of the things that have not necessarily been in the past couple of years due to COVID, continuing to expand and bring some of those exciting community building activities back. With that, I will pause and open up questions for the start of school, because at our next board meeting, we'll be able to talk about the launch of elementary with our kids.
All right, thank you. I will start, if I could, with Ms. Banks-Cupshaw.
Sorry, I already busted into my questions. So I think I'm good at this point.
I have a follow-up to that, though. The staff has access, has access, like on their devices, who's been, which student is, has been issued a pass then?
Correct.
So the, the, the Paris and others who are in the hallway or, or other staff members?
So there's a set of hall, security hall monitors and admin who would have access to, to hall passes and in that area, yes.
Okay, so to that end, so anybody who has that student, are they able to see how much then, like that student is out of class?
It will bring some interesting data, I imagine.
So our admin, I believe we're beginning with our admin tracking that data and then determining the best usage and best follow-up.
Okay.
I found that my voice often made people want to use the restroom. When I, when I was the instructor. So.
I believe what he's implying that there are students that, well, and as we talk about classroom and building community, I think that is a great focus. All jokes and voices aside, it's when students aren't as engaged, they will sometimes check out in their, in their chair, but they will also check out in other ways. And so there are students that might use one pass in a year, and there are students that might use multiple passes in a day.
And not to discount that there are valid reasons.
Oh, of course, of course.
Correct. Oh, that's just, yes, it's information we need to be aware of is how much time are students missing, are there patterns in their supports that students need, are there health concerns, or are there engagement concerns? Or, you know, just information that's important to have.
It's all information.
It's all information. Ms. Brackey, do you have questions or comments?
I do. I was going to ask for more info about the digital hall passes as well, so thank you for taking that one on already. Two questions. The first is, can you just give a couple of examples of what we're doing to actually value multilingualism in an authentic and meaningful way?
So we continue to expand. Dr. Leibson, I'm going to have her come and help.
And it's okay if this is something that you want to spend more time talking about later, but I, I think that was particularly exciting and intriguing to me to know more about what that means.
So we are doing, it is a focus area for the whole district. Kaysha, Dr. Will Height, sorry, has worked to bring in training for all of our new staff. It's embedded in our practice profile, which is our instructional model to make sure that we bring more voice into, more student talk into our classrooms. And it's across all grade levels. So it's a focus area that when we do walkthroughs, that we are looking at, and it was training that was provided to all of our new staff and focused on as we went into back to school.
Thank you. I'm excited to just know more about how this takes shape over the coming year. And it, it made me think of our high school graduation ceremony last June and how I felt like that was a very meaningful step to have a bilingual graduation ceremony for what I believe was the first time.
Yes, you had actually see things on the ground. Yes, that was our first bilingual graduation in a while. And actually, I was in the high school middle of the day, and there were announcements by Principal Collins in English, and then there were announcements that came right after in Spanish. And so there are visibly tangible things that we can see that are beginning to occur.
Yeah. And then my other question was, question slash comment maybe. I am so supportive of taking the first two days of school to do some school-wide community building. Having been a middle school teacher, I can completely understand and imagine the value that comes from taking the time to do that on the front end. And so I'm so excited about it, and I don't know, maybe that's something that the middle school team can share when they come do their presentation with us, but I would just be really interested to hear more about how they're spending the time and what they see the results as being.
They are beginning as a larger launch of their advisory program, which is really around relationships. They're also working to create teams that are, again, sponsoring a park in Richfield, so they're all taking on names of parks and will, I believe, be taking a field trip to their particular park at some point as part of the way of building that larger community.
That's cool.
But I won't steal all of the thunder of the middle school. I will make notes, as I often do, and I will make sure that when they come to host our meeting, that community building and some of the things that they're doing that is exciting will, will be shared here at the board.
Do they have like shirts with their like names on it and stuff?
You know, I didn't see that. I saw black shirts with the logo, Richfield Middle School on them. I have seen a wide range of, of interesting, but they might. I'll tell them, you want it, Rachel.
I just love being a shirt, right?
Still waiting for those school board hoodies.
So it's about you wanting one of the shirts.
I mean, I would take one. I wouldn't refuse a shirt. I may alter it, but I, I love being a shirt.
Gotcha.
Noted.
I'm good.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Brackey?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Carter, do you have questions or comments on the back to school presentation?
Sure do. So the connect and assess, just to be clear, are there plans to expand that then beyond K-5?
So the first thing we're doing is we're seeing how it goes. We'll analyze, we'll then meet with Education Richfield. One of the things to keep in mind is we did use COVID dollars to extend the school year. And so we need to determine the value of this program, need to, the success with both teachers, students, and, and staff, or, and families. And then we can certainly look at what is the next iteration. So we are open to see where it goes.
I'm more just checking, because it sounded like you're alluding to it, and so I wanted to just clarify if that was already the plan or you wanted to?
I don't know. I'm one of those who, when we actually experiment, I'm actually open to it continuing or not. And so we're going to see feedback. Informally, I would say there's been overwhelming positive, but that is very subjective, subjective at this time. We don't have any statistical numbers yet.
So RMS, in the two days of onboarding, what does it mean? And I can, I know that's open-ended question. If you'd like, I can bring it very down tangible. So at the dinner table.
You're saying you have personal experience.
Personal experience within the last couple hours, so hot off the press. Do the kids get it? Because the, we had a guest over, and the children were talking together about their experiences, and it's, I, I hear it from our perspective of like onboarding and whatnot. Do the kids understand what we're trying to do?
It's a great question. I mean, that is the goal ultimately. In one day, I would say no, right? So the experience of our students in middle school, particularly if we think about last year, because the year before, they weren't in school for much of the year, they were in and out. We really wanted to build strong, consistent expectations where students knew what was expected to happen, could expect consistent supports, and could expect consistent follow-through. I'm not sure that that was something they learned over the course of that previous year. And so they came into this year not necessarily having the background knowledge of what it is to have clear expectations, clear supports and training, and then clear expectations and follow-through. So this is going to be a gradual process over the course of the year. If you think about what the goals were today, and I was in and out of the building a couple times, it was really building that strong relationship between school, teacher, and student. So to make sure people felt connected to the middle school and connected to their teachers, build a strong community within their advisory classroom, and they're staying with their advisors most of the day. And then begin to understand and, and really know what are the expectations of the school? What do I do at recess? What do I do at lunch? What do I do in hallways? What do I do in classrooms? And then create a system of, I know what I'm supposed to do, and that's something I'm engaged and interested in doing.
Did the new phone policy get implemented today, or will be implemented after the onboarding?
I believe they are rolling out the expectations. And so did kids hear about it? Yes. Was there strong implementation? I'd have to go and, and do more observation. But again, as things are rolling out, it's going to be a process.
Sure. Just in that discussion, it just, it, it'll be interesting to see how, how it goes, right? I mean, I get, you know, some kids are excited about it, some kids aren't. And then it'll be interesting to see if we have differences in how it's implemented and executed, right? Because just again, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but just some of the initial feedback that I've heard, sounds like there may be differences in approaches to how the cell phone usage will be allowed, including AirPods too, right? Which I think is interesting, because if we're saying no cell phones, then it's like, are we going to take the headphones out as well? Yeah. And maybe this is for follow-up.
Well, I mean, it's fair to also share that the adults in the building aren't necessarily used to or experienced in consistent expectations, consistent support, and consistent follow-through. And so it's, it's training and retraining everyone. I can tell you that cell phones specifically, when I was approached about my feeling about cell phones, my answer was, I don't really have strong feelings either direction, but what I do know is, is if we are implementing a cell phone-based policy in the middle school, then everybody has to implement it, and everybody has to agree. And so what I can tell you did occur is the teacher leadership team felt strongly about a no-cell phone-based group. They presented that during opening week to the staff. They gained consensus, full agreement from the entire staff who all signed on to implementing. I believe the words included, nobody pretending they don't see, nobody gets to be the nice one who looks the other way. And so if there are inconsistent expectations at this time, I'm not surprised. And yet, that's not, that's not the ultimate goal of any of the behavior expectations.
Day one.
Day one.
So then, again, the continued discussion, I think there will be some interesting feedback around the digital passes, along with the change in no backpacks. And so is there a potential that there, that class times could change, or, I mean, how do we determine that the time between classes is, is right with the change in the backpack policy? And I, I didn't look to see if the schedule changed from last year to this year for in-between classes, but is that open?
I think that can be a conversation. Having been around the middle school a lot last year, I can say that generally, the amount of time to get between classes is not necessarily a problem if students decide to go to their locker, put books in, put, take books out, close their locker, and go literally anywhere else in the building. It's not the whole amount of time that is the issue between students getting to and from class.
Sure.
And so the question then is, what needs to be built in if more time for things that aren't about getting between classes and getting one's materials? So, and that's a conversation the middle school team would have.
Well, and parents too, right? I mean, it's, it's part of the solution as well.
Right, right, right.
It's fair. That was it, thank you.
All right. I, I had a question about the, the new exploratories. So we have new exploratories, you mentioned drama and dance, which are, which are great. And, and so, at the middle school level, these are exploratories not, they're not properly categorized as electives, and that we, we assign them, we, we roll them out.
Students rotate through exploratories, and over the course of, I think they get six of the, at least half of them or more over the course of their time in the middle school, yes. So they don't choose, they roll through, hence exploratory versus elective. Elective is choose, and they're looking as they roll out these exploratories, similar to what has been done in the past, is possible options for electives in the eighth grade or seventh grade after they go through exploratories, but that's, that's as they're working their way through it.
Yeah, okay. It's just, in terms of families learning about them, when they, when they get that information like that, are the materials available if someone says, my, my child was assigned into a class on dance, like they can, they're, they're able to find a description of it, or the counselor can provide it?
Good question. Don't know if there are course descriptions for many of the classes in middle school.
Okay. I mean, right, I suppose a class in, in, you know, social studies with a focus on, you know, certain history has its own description just in title, but a course in dance might, could, could go a variety of places, or what, what style and things like that. So just what, what's expected of students or what they're, you know, they get exposed to.
Right. Well, students would certainly get a syllabus upon entering the class.
That's true.
But I can certainly take a look in that area.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate that. Does anyone else have questions or comments about back to school? It's an exciting day. It was really.
I know I was pumped this morning, so.
Yeah.
It was fun to be there.
Definitely.
Excellent, excellent. All right. Well, that, that concludes then our back to school presentation. We move now to superintendent goals.
All right. And so, as part of my evaluative process, building All right, and so as part of my evaluative process, building on the previous evaluation in the spring and beginning to look forward, this A-First Draft typically goes through three readings. This is just the first, and then gathering some input from you all.
I'm just now seeing the years wrong on the goal.
Ah, so that would be changed.
Very much a first draft. So we rolled over some prior goals, and that is on the collective. None of us caught this.
That is correct. So I will take that as my responsibility, as Laura laughs over there. That's on me, Laura.
I read it too. Sorry, I apologize.
No, that is quite all right, and that's actually... That's funny. So go quickly through the second slide, because that one's even worse, where it says 2020, 2021, which is even where I run.
It's amazing what the board will correct on the fly.
As you can tell, we put these together, and it has been a hectic start of the school year to get ready for everything. So, and yet, we have a consistency. And so what's good about seeing the years, other than the error that I'm openly making fun of myself for, is we follow the same process that we have every year. It's really followed after the Q-COM process, of which 35% of the overall evaluation is around student achievement, and so we look at specific data based on gains and overall performance of our students. And we look at process goals as another 35% of the overall evaluation, which is really strategic plans, strategies, and activities designed to improve our district, and you're going to see those are more developed than the others to start with, and then individual performance, which is sort of that overall evaluation of my performance and any other additional components you want me to focus on. So historically, we begin with an area of common formative assessment growth, and so we're really looking at what are the common formative assessments that are being implemented to start the year. This is an update based on last year. What we are doing is really looking at what assessments we're able to launch to the start of the school year, and what will things look like. And so we will be implementing this later, late September, early October, with what are the major assessments, typically in literacy and in math, to see how our students are growing over the course of the year. Then we have graduation rate growth, and so this is just, again, past graduation rate. We'll continue to update that. We also tend to look demographically to make sure that we are looking at how students are doing within each demographic area of our school district, and so it's not just overall growth, but it's also growth within demographic areas. And then one of the things we learned from our last year presentation as we did this, and as we looked at our vision cards, is really putting specific numbers and percentages in, because as numbers change and percentages change, it gives the whole picture by putting all of the details in. And then finally, continued ongoing growth in regard to MCA scores, and so looking at where are we in reading and math from an MCA overall perspective, where we are within each of our demographic groups, and then again, looking at overall proficiency and overall growth. And so as we go from there, the other thing for you all to think about are there other areas of student data growth proficiency to focus on, and what we'll do is we'll populate that with updated information when we come back to the board, and any other database goals if there is feedback over the next couple of weeks. Process goals are things that we have talked about last year to really focus on, and some of the things that we are really working on as a district. And so as we think about the overall community focus, deepening social emotional supports and community across the district, we know with the Director of Extended Learning and two years of funding to continue outside of school, that is some of the focus of those federal funds with requirements, really expanding that programming, to continue to provide increased supports and more effective supports, overseeing the entire overhaul of our crisis management policies and practices. And so that is, as we learned from our experts, something we'll be working on over the course of the year. We did. We actually have implemented already some of the initial expectations a couple of times, and launched those protocols, and those are the things that we already started with, but these are the things that will really get down into the weeds and really hash out all of our overall plans. Continuing to deepen our district equity implementation across the district, as we focus on ensuring that we're serving all of our students, and then managing the continuing transition to standards-based grading district-wide. This is also an area where historically, board members have added an idea or two, and so I'll be looking for input into additional process goals. Because these are the things we are focused on, they are in our strategic plan, and we already have launched, so these are areas that we've moved ourselves forward. Typically, we work on our survey data as looking at overall implementation and growth, so we will populate this with, if there is appropriate survey data from our parent-community survey, we'll take a look at that. We have done community building activities implemented throughout the entire district. We also, prior to school, had the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee already meet on August 30th, and so we're going to continue that work to continue expanding those supports. Extended learning programming, we actually launched increased programming and increased enrichment, where we typically went to the middle of the day, and we extended into the afternoon. We're really working with internal and external partners, and we're going to be launching in the very near future a soft launch of the Best Buy Teen Tech Center, looking for a larger launch coming in the coming weeks, as we continue to do that work.
Question, is the Best Buy Teen Tech Center, is that what's in the middle school?
That is located in the middle school, and it'll be open to the entire community, and specifically even more after school and on weekends, and so we're working on that programming. The overhaul of the crisis management, we did that full summer review of all the protocols, recommendations for year-long revision. We agreed to partnership with a subject matter expert, Kaufman and Associates. We did train all staff during workshop week. We also trained management in the overall protocols, and like I said, we have actually used them a couple of times. We have also begun some of those crisis management drills as we really begin to work towards implementing those new protocols across our district. Then deepening equity implementation, one of the things we talked about when we passed the equity guidelines. We had equity guideline training. What we do in the opening week is we train, much like we are going to review a set of our policies, we train all staff or have all staff review policies that have been updated or changed. And so equity guideline training actually happened in every building, every program for all of our staff, and then obviously, you all shared an equity vision, and we've been talking about that in all of our buildings and with all of our leadership, with all of our community, just being very clear in who we are and the things that we're going to do to move forward to support equity across the district. And then in that continuing transition to standards-based training, grading, we actually trained all staff during workshop week, and so our workshop week was a blend of community equity and some of those technical components to lead us to excellence, and so trained all staff, along with the use of the technology program synergy, which helps people implement standards-based grading, and using the technology to work that across all of our classrooms. And then we have a calendar out through the Teaching and Learning Department, a professional development plan throughout the entire school year for all K-12 teachers in regard to standards-based grading across the district. Over and above and beyond that, and we just finished this part of the process recently, there is that overall evaluation, of which we'll talk about at each goals presentation. Once we finalize these, there's a mid-course in February, and then an end typically May-June, do the evaluation, a closed session, get feedback from my direct reports and feedback from board members, and then we go through that formal evaluative process. And so with that, if people have input or thoughts about goals, I can take those now. Otherwise, again, this is read one of number three, so the next one we'll populate with some data, and then also integrate and add some of the board feedback and input.
All right, thank you. We'll start, if we could, with Ms. Brackey.
Sure, sorry. A couple of things. One is, I just really appreciate the timing of this. I feel like having this first version come on the first day of school is actually great when we think about the scope of the academic year, so thank you to everybody who made that possible. And then the second thing is, as I was looking at the process goals, I was really trying to stay rooted in the priorities of the year around community equity and excellence, and the degree to which there's alignment on the process goals that we're holding you accountable to and what we're saying we're really about this year. And I feel like there is good alignment from the process goals, maybe being even more explicit that that is sort of the lens that we should be using as we think about your leadership this year as the superintendent could be helpful. And I think the push that I would make for the next version, as we just continue to look at this and finalize it, is how to also embed that in the measurements that we're using, and really staying focused on outcomes and not only activities. Does that make sense? Okay, good. Then period, end of sentence. We're good. That's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brackey. Mr. Carter, do you have questions, comments?
I do. So one of my suggestions, questions, comments about goals would be, can we track the number of students entering RMS and through entry and maybe graduation from RHS? And I guess, you know, one of the things that I've heard, as I talk to different parents and community members, I hear people that they're in middle school, and then they're leaving the middle school and going elsewhere, right? So it's, they're in the middle school for a year or two, and then they're going to another high school or a different school, and it feels almost like we're a launching point to other districts, which is disappointing. And, you know, like, one of the things I was thinking about is like, how much we advertise all the good PSOE options and programs that we have here, and the opportunity for our students to gain college credits prior to leaving. And so it's sad when I hear of community members, people who live in Richfield, going to other districts, and I don't know if we track or measure that, and then I'd also be curious if we're losing students of color through that process as well. And that's who I've heard it from so far.
So, quick question, because I know Mr. Holgy is one of our main enrollment projectors and also helps us monitor the data. Is... So you are suggesting a loss of students from fifth to sixth, or a loss of students from eighth to ninth?
From eighth to ninth.
So that's... So I can certainly look into that. It's interesting that you would say that, because that is literally the opposite of what historically has happened. We actually have a typical historical large growth between eighth and ninth grade, and so I'm not... I can certainly come back with some, and I'm just giving eye contact to Craig to...
I would say I can... I support that as a... On paper, that's what happens. The numbers do grow from eighth to ninth. However, the people are not all the same. We get an influx of ninth graders from elsewhere, and we... But we do, you know, if you view it as we would like to maintain all of our eighth graders who advance to ninth, we would like to keep all of them.
Right.
And that should be our goal. And so, yes, you know, if we lose 30 but gain 50 from elsewhere, is that... How do you consider that?
Right. So then, maybe it's a different goal of, are you tracking... Do we track the number of potential residents? And what does that residential footprint look like throughout the years, right? Does it stay consistent, or does... I mean, to Tim's point, do we lose residents but gain non-residents? An interesting metric, because I want to... We want to provide great education to all students. That said, I would hope that the taxpayers would also hold us accountable, saying, "We should be giving the money to our students, the students who live in Richfield." And maybe I'm wrong in that, it's... But I guess as a taxpayer myself, I'd like to see it's like, let's give it to Richfield students first.
Right. So we do track enrollment and where people are from. We have a report that Mr. Holgy's team puts out. It comes out about every January, the where we are in enrollment report. Now, it used to be easier for me to find on the website, so I will... We'll get you the link to where they are housed. But that has a pretty detailed breakdown by... You can see by grade, our inflow and outflow, whether it's open enrollment, who... Which students are choosing homeschool versus charters versus other publics or privates, and you can see it by grade. So you can track it that way. I mean, that's some of the answer.
But to your specific point, that market share has been part of superintendent goals in the past. So I think it's more, we need to have the conversation whether we think it should be in the future, because I think that there are real arguments to be made, sort of on all sides, of the degree to which we want to actually say to Steve that that should be one of his core priorities for the year.
Sure.
Well, and I feel like, too, based upon what we've been talking about in terms of this orientation stuff, and really like digging in, I feel like that is geared towards, you know, this retention piece too, and meeting these students where they're at, and building that community for the goal of keeping these students, right, and really seeing them through to the very end. Yeah, so I don't know. I guess I'm just like this wildly optimistic person that sees that all of these different parts are really like this puzzle that is working towards the end of graduating all of these students. So...
So just some things for us to reflect on or think about as we think about retention, or we think about students going all the way through, right? So there are families who will move in and out of Richfield, and so we want to make sure we're serving them regardless of where they are and where they are not. The other thing, and we've talked about this, and I'm going to say it in relation to equity, which is there are very differing perspectives in our world about equity and equity work. There are very different perspectives in our world about gender inclusion and gender inclusion work. We have heard at our board very differing perspectives in our world about comprehensive sexual education. There are those that have an adamant philosophical agreement with each of those things, and there are those that have a very adamant philosophical disagreement with those things. I would worry if we are focused, or the level of focus on market share, that that behavior could be in direct conflict with some of the other work that we are doing. I know that as a member of the Pelsby Licensor Board in the state of Minnesota, I received, well, there was, I don't know, 450 people who attended a meeting to suggest that training new teachers in things like accepting students for their pronoun was not acceptable, or teaching and making sure that teachers acknowledge and can accept differences of race in their classroom, that there was a large number of speakers against that, which are the new standards that are passed in draft four of a model that's being discussed right now at the state licensure. And so the reason I'm connecting this to market share is I'm telling you that there are people in every community who have very strong feelings either way about some of the things that we are committed to in Richfield Public Schools, and so sometimes market share could be in conflict, and very direct conflict, with either the level we implement or the level we talk about some of the work that we do. And it's something that board members should reflect on, I think.
Just that one question. Thank you.
No, thank you. Ms. Banks-Cupcho, questions, comments?
Well, I mean, what I was thinking about too was kind of about what Crystal was talking about, just in terms of the timing of, you know, the equity policy and how we are now like in this place where we are now kind of moving all of this work forward, and I just really, you know, appreciate that at the beginning of the school year now. We're just able to have all of this in front of us now, so I'm just... I'm grateful to be here right now, talking about this. So, thank you.
All right. I would say, you know, that the year-end, the chair conducts the review, and it is, of course, a summary. The board contributes, but the chair is responsible for the direct delivery of the message of how the review went, and based on using this as a document of source of measurement. And so I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to share. You can share it privately, or you can share it in this meeting, if there are ways you think that we can edit this, to have it be meaningful to the... You know, meaningful to the goals you think are critical for us, but also at the same time respecting the fact that, you know, we are, like, staff has been trained, and we've started, you know, we've had one day in, but it's only one day, but, you know, there are aspects of the achievement and there are aspects of what we hope to accomplish that we cannot, you know, we should not just say, "Oh, no, wait, veer to the left," or "veer to the right." And so it might just be a wordsmithing, and, you know, things that we already have in place, but I think it's important to commemorate them as goals, and aligns with a lot of the conversations we've had. And so I'll work with, if people can give me their input, I can work with superintendent to make sure that we commemorate it in time for our version two. That's all I have, just comment. I can share all my other stuff within that, and you'll see the extent to which any of it survives.
Okay. Well, that concludes, I believe, our section on non-action items. We do not have commendations, and nor do we have public comment at this meeting. We will have our next opportunity for public comment at the next meeting, which is in 13 days, not 14, at our next meeting, which is two weeks from yesterday. So with that, we move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, of course, is that basket of relatively routine items that we consent to pass in bulk without individual discussion. So before we take a motion on the consent agenda, does anyone have an item from the consent agenda they wish to remove for additional or specific comment or discussion?
No.
Seeing and hearing no offers of that, we could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Banks-Cupcho and a second by Mr. Carter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Chair, what's aye? And the consent agenda is approved. This moves us to old business, Policy 104, a drug-free workplace and a drug-free school.
All right, and so a slight twist, because I'm not... Sorry, I'm not actually putting this forward for passage today. passage today. Late last week, we received just confirmation that MSBA had updated their model policies, and we just didn't have time, given the board packet, to double-check slash triple-check that we weren't missing anything in the new updates. So while we have it for a read, we're going to breeze through this rather quickly, asking for no vote on this today. And we will bring this back for a fourth read after Laura and I double-check eye-to-eye versus the new MSBA updates.
All right. So the messaging is, what we have in front of us and within the packet has not yet gone through the review in comparison to the current model.
Correct, because the current model showed up literally on, I think, Thursday or Friday of last week.
Sure, sure.
Weird timing.
It happens. Okay. Does anyone, having read the not-quite-ready-for-prime-time policy 104 with questions or comments that they've not previously shared? No? No? Okay. Well, we eagerly await the impact of the newest MSBA model, and we will, we will just hold that item for, for the next meeting. Okay. That brings us to policy 805, disposition of obsolete equipment and material. Is this a third read in?
This is a third read, and again, just remains with those small, small changes from before.
I will note, I think there's still within here, the paragraph that says, "Not disposed of as described above upon a written resolution of the school board," or is there still?
Yes, you are correct. So we're going to hold on this one, too.
We're going to hold on this one, too.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So, for those who are not serial watchers of our program, the last time that it was brought up, I think Ms. Baraki brought up that it, the wording in this current version says that students can apply to the school board if the materials haven't been disposed of in some other way. And, well, we just aren't built to handle direct inquiry like that for equipment. We would authorize the administration to handle it on our behalf with a summary given to us somewhere in the consent agenda, we assume.
Correct. And given this was MSBA language, and again, we didn't have a chance to double-check that we are able to do that. So we just want to make sure that we are getting that logistically correct. So thank you for that catch.
Excellent. So, we're, we're, old business, remaining old business. Dare I ask about policy 782, environmental health and safety standards and guidelines?
I believe this one is a second read.
It's a second read?
I'm just double-checking. So that puts us in good shape, because we're not trying to pass something that we have to read again. And so, this just gives us that overall update. You don't see significant changes in this policy, and so there haven't been new major changes. And so we are just presenting that to you for a second read tonight.
Right. And the way this one comes to fruition is when Mr. Kretzinger and team come in and Mr. Holgy share with us sort of some of the summary. You know, we get reports on that mock OSHA.
Correct. One of the outcomes of our partnership with Metro EXU and Metro ECSU, who comes in and partners with us and our onsite health and safety team to make sure that we are doing things as well as we can.
Excellent.
I think my one question about this that I assume has been built into the review process, but would be good to have confirmed before our next meeting, when we theoretically will vote on it, is that what is in here is aligned with what our actual practices are. And I say that just because this is, this one, you know, was originally written in 2000.
Yep.
It was last revised in 2016, which is a good number of years ago. So I just, I sort of want to make sure and have the confidence that we believe that this is still...
Relevant.
Accurate.
We will go through that triple-check and triple-check to make sure that it aligns to the practices of health and safety.
All right. Any other questions or comments on policy 782 and guideline 782.1?
On here.
All right. Excellent. We will move now to new business, and, boy, do we have a lot of it. We have a lot of policies that we review on an annual basis, and what better time to do it than at the start of the school year?
Correct. And so this is the policy review, and so this isn't, this is not a full rewrite of the policies. This is just making sure that we are up to date with them and that we have seen them. And then there may be very, very minor wording changes. If there is an overhaul of any policy, it wouldn't be in this particular review. The only changes would generally be formatting or some very, very minor change. And so the goal is to just have it reviewed on a yearly basis to make sure that we are double-checking each of those and remaining familiar.
Do we then, at some point, go through each of the policies, each of these policies in detail?
Yes. So these all still remain on the five-year review cycle?
Yeah.
So this doesn't have, this is outside of that.
Yeah.
So, policy 103, for example, was last reviewed in January of 2021?
Correct.
Prior to that, it says 2014. But it's reviewed and affirmed, you know, you can see a couple of times, August 2021, September 2022, in red, so proposed. Do we, when we affirm it, do we, do we vote on these individually?
I know, this is just as a large group.
As a large group?
Yep.
Okay. So there are quite a few. We have the policy 103, harassment, I mean, I feel like we should at least acknowledge the titles. Policy 103, harassment prohibition and administrative guidelines. Policy 107, electronic use and communications. Policy 113, bullying prohibition. Policy 301, our org chart. Policy 302, position assignments, very close to the org chart. Policy 407 on leaves of absence. Policy 409, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Policy 410, mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Policy 506, student sex nondiscrimination. Policy 541, student behavior. Policy 602, school district system accountability. Policy 802, crisis management. There are some guidelines associated with these as well. I will say, the areas I noted, if I, let me ask you, I'll offer to others first, is, Ms. Baraki, do you have questions or comments on any of these?
I do not.
Mr. Carter, do you have questions, comments? Anything that cut your eye?
I thought I had one, I was just looking for it quick again.
Do you want me to?
Come back, please, just?
All right. Ms. Banks-Cupcho, questions or comments on the...
No, sir.
The various policies? I will say, policy 107, we did discuss the off, it's mentioned, the highlighted, the off-campus speech component, and I know that that's an area where we do have concern about it, but there, there are recent court cases discussing just how careful we have to be on that.
Correct.
Okay. So I just want to acknowledge that out loud. I will note that the policy 301 org chart, I noticed an inconsistency in how our building deans are reflected. I think the STEM dean is listed, but not RMS or RHS. That is policy 301.
All right.
I'll fast-forward through my pages here to see if I can catch it. I think that's what I saw. I wrote it down, you know.
That makes sense, because deans are still teachers on special assignments, so they're not in the management team. There was one dean, and we did expand in regard to the social emotional support, so we...
Right. So, I mean, in terms of consistency, I would think that, and so it's interesting that the deans are not mentioned in policy 302, and, as, at all. And so, however we decide to do it, I think we should have, be consistent in that either all deans are mentioned or none of them, which sounds cold, but there may be reasons for that. And that's all I have for the, the collection of policies. Mr. Carter, did we find it?
I believe I did. I was looking under the policy 409, and I was just curious, some of these additions, they were around neglect. And I was just curious, what prompted some of those changes? I mean, to your point, if these are not kind of the mass overhauls, were there something that was kind of the impetus for making those additions?
Say, which exactly?
Policy 409 on neglect, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Now, some of them were moved to put definitions in alphabetical order.
Ah, okay.
It says, according to the comments here...
I suspect that, too, as if there were any changes in the statutes, that, that would, that would require an update.
Right. So on page two, we have mental injury appearing as item E on definitions, and that is noted as alphabetical move from somewhere else. Also, under neglect, the phrasing on growth delay was moved from definite, you know, subsection one to subsection three.
And then if you look down...
The meaning of that, I don't...
Teachers are mandated reporters, and if a child presents as neglected or abused by even their parents, they are required by law to report it.
Isn't it all staff, not just teachers?
It's all staff, yes, but we work to collaboratively support. And then if you look on the, it's page 164 of the packet, they changed the statute about the reporting of maltreatment of minors. And so the key was just to realign our language and reporting expectations to what was statutorily now required in the context.
Got it. And I think it was 158, page 158, the number eight, and the definition around neglect does not. And I was like, it just seemed weird of like, why is this getting called on? If that matches the law, then that makes sense.
Yeah, these would come straight out of the legal, legal language.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Right. So that, that, that's the exclusion for faith-based reasons, right, for...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we've covered them all, I think, in, in some detail. Mr. Carter, would you prefer the 409 come back for...
No, I, nope, I'm good. I just want a clarification.
So with that, then, do we, again, I'll ask, do we vote on this, or do we take the vote, affirming our review of it?
You take affirm, affirming review, that you have seen it, and that you have...
So if there are no more questions, we could entertain a motion affirming our review of these policies as presented in bulk.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion by Ms. Baraki and a second by Ms. Banks-Cupcho. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The chair votes aye. And we have affirmed our review of these policies as presented. All right. We move next. We have, we have stricken from the, the board member work authorization, so we will bring that back at the next meeting, at which we anticipate full attendance. And that brings us then to, Mr. Holgy's warming up. Resolution authorizing the issuance of school building bonds.
Thank you very much. We have for your approval tonight a resolution regarding the intention of the school board to issue general obligation school building bonds, series 20, 22A, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $2,185,000, and taking other actions with respect thereto. This summer, we were approached by Matt Hammer and Shelby McQuaid from Ellers, who are municipal advisors, regarding a change in statute that provided an opportunity for us to issue another $2 million of bonds that were originally approved by the voters as part of the 2017 referendum. At that time, there was statute and bond attorneys who had differing perspectives about some language that was in statute that limited the amount to less than what the voters approved in that referendum. That statute changed, and so that provided this opportunity for the additional $2 million of bonds, which is what the voters approved in 2017, but wasn't allowed under the state statute. With this, every time we go through a bond issue or went through the construction project, we did a lot of evaluation about what the needs were of the district, and obviously had to prioritize based on what the taxpayers were willing to approve at that time for the perspective. And during the construction, we had a number of other issues that were identified that were outside of that scope of that original construction project. Some of those items are listed here as items that have been identified as potential needs. We don't know if we'll have funding for all of these, and we haven't gone through the full funding assessment, but we are looking at some mainline water replacement in Sheridan Hills that was discovered during the construction project, potentially some additional LED lighting upgrades, and as well as some scoreboards and other branding needs that have also come up as part of our branding and marketing work here in the district since then. With this, I would just kind of point out, and before I turn it over to Matt to go through the details of this, when we issued the original bond, the actual impact on taxpayers was projected as part of that referendum. That impact came less than what was approved and what the voters thought they were approving from their impact on their tax base. And with this one, we are looking at keeping a level set for where the debt portion of our taxes have been. So we had some bonds coming off or reducing here in the next payable years. This would basically keep it even for the next four years instead of having that reduction. So that's kind of the high-level overview. I'm going to turn it over to Matt to go through the details and answer any other questions that may come up as well, so.
Yeah, thanks, Craig. Well, that's a very good summary of kind of what we're looking at today. If we go back to 2017 election, the voters had approved $86,800 in general obligation bonds. And at the time, the district had maximized that authority based on the interpretation of the statute and what the bond attorney would allow at $84,615, which puts us at $2,185,000 of remaining authority to be issued. Right now, we're looking at a schedule that the board would authorize tonight. We would take bids the morning of October 17th, and then the board would award at that meeting later that night, which is our typical process. And then funds would be in hand estimated November 10th for the district to start utilizing on those projects that Craig identified. We have several schedules as part of our pre-sale report. I think, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, but this is the page that I kind of like to go to, because this is highlighting kind of where we are at. So the voter-approved, authorized line was the tax rate that was approved by voters or what they were anticipating to have for a tax rate back in 2017, when the board held the referendum. As you can see, tax rates have been coming down since that time with property valuation growth, development, those types of things that have went on, which has allowed that tax rate for the district's capital levies to actually decrease over time. The blue bars is the remaining authority, and our goal as part of the plan when we talked to Craig was to try to keep the tax impact or the tax rate for the district's capital levies at the same level as it was in taxes payable '22. And you can see we're accomplishing that, so we're not increasing taxes on the district's capital or debt levies above what we would in '22. And then you can see we're have a repayment term of four years, so we're actually paying the debt off very quickly, keeping interest rate costs down, and then allowing the district to have those funds to fund, fund the projects. And then the final levy for the new bonds would be taxes payable '26, and then there would be a subsequent reduction after that time in the district's levies again at that point. The gray bars are your existing debt service, and then on this chart, the blue bar represents the district's capital project levy, which has been increasing a little bit over time as well, which we kind of built into the overall plan. So with that, that's a summary of what we're looking at. I think the main takeaway is, is we are proposing a plan and have put a plan forward that would keep those debt service taxes at the same level as they were in '22, so there's no additional tax rate increase above what we would have anticipated in '22. And we've built some contingencies in as we kind of look at utilizing the district's debt access and those types of things to make sure that can happen as part of the overall plan. So I can answer any questions folks have about the issuance or the schedule or anything else related to the resolution.
Sure.
Can I ask, the, is, the wording that was used to describe the, why the full amount wasn't sought after the voter, the voters approved it, is it, was, was it that the statute did not allow it, or it was vague and there was, and the more conservative path was to go for the lower amount?
So, the statute was changed in 2021, so based on the district's bond attorney's interpretation at the time, the maximum authorization was taken back in 2018, and bonds were issued February of 2018. Since that time, because there's been varying interpretations by, depending on who your bond attorney would have determined what you could have deposited in the construction fund, that limitation or overriding limitation in the statute was changed between the '20 and '21 legislative sessions. So there's authorization now, and Richfield isn't the only district. There's several districts that have already moved forward in this path. Morehead is one of them. Grand Rapids Public Schools is another one that's already issued the remaining authority. And there's several other districts that are including debt service levies and their levy for taxes payable '23, and will be planning on doing the same thing.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carter, do you have a question?
I do. I just, I'm just following up on what you just asked. So, can you just bring it down to the last slide, quick? Because I think that's what you were just talking about, and I'm trying to...
That's the one with the bars, yeah.
Yeah. The bars that you're talking about.
Page 226. There we go.
So, in that, I'm just trying to make sure I understand that there's the top kind of the red line saying voter authorization, but then what you're talking about is really the blue bar, the dark blue bar, right?
Yes.
And that, so you're saying, and I think this is where I'm getting confused. So, the, the top red line is what the voters authorized, and what you're saying, from a law perspective, we could have gone up to? Or you're saying the, the blue bar is that line?
No, the, that red bar actually represents the tax rate that... No, the, that red bar actually represents the tax rate that voters were anticipating where taxes were going to be, and you can see back in 2018, when Craig was referencing that it came in less than expected. That little gap there is, was, was that little less than expected at the time, and tax base is growing since then. So when we set up the debt service levies schedules when we're going to voters, we want to make sure that we have a level debt service payment over the period of years, it was a 25-year term. But as tax base grows, that means the tax rate, because that debt service levy stays the same, and the tax rate to collect that comes down over time. And that's what's represented there between 2018 and 2022, is that tax rate has been coming down over time because the district's overall tax base with development, residential development, commercial development, has been coming down, requiring less, a lower tax rate to collect that debt service levy. So we're anticipating some conservative, we've, I think we have 10% growth built in based on information we have from Hennington County, which is conservative than from what was anticipated, but that is what's represented between '22 and '23, is that initial payment there in the blue bar, and then some conservative growth going forward that allows us to pay it off within that four-year period and keep the debt service tax rate at the 2022 level for district taxpayers.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so expanded tax base, spreads out the pool for us, is my understanding, yes. Ms. Banks-Cupcho, questions, comments?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Baraki, questions, comments?
I'm good, thank you. A helpful graph.
I love me a picture, really.
It's helpful for those of us from, this is our second or third language.
Yeah.
Yes.
The prior slide's the wall of numbers. I found comfort there.
Yeah, if you want your details, you go back one.
That's for him.
Looks familiar. So with that, then, we could entertain a, if there are no further questions, we can entertain a motion on the resolution.
I move we approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Baraki and a second by Ms. Banks-Cupcho. Any final discussion? All right, as a resolution, I will poll the board. Ms. Banks-Cupcho?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the resolution is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds great, we'll see you next month.
Sounds good, thank you. Right, yeah, so next month, we'll get the, we'll unseal it, people will bid on it, we'll get all the results, it will be fun, fun, fun. All right. This brings us to advanced planning, I believe, and first up is a legislative update.
I think this time there really is not a legislative update.
We have not had anything in the last two...
Just rumor.
It's just rumor, and, and the, okay.
Lots of focus on elections, very little on legislative.
Lots of focus on elections and the state fair, okay.
Yep.
That moves us then to information and questions from the board. Does anyone have anything they would like to share with the board?
I do.
Please do.
So one of my committees is foul, insert obvious joke, just kidding, Friends of Woodlake, and they had their half marathon July 30th, and that is a fundraiser for, and they raised $30,000. I don't have exact numbers, but that's approximate, and that's what allows our K through fifth graders to go to Woodlake twice a year, which is so great. I know my daughter always loved that, so, so it was a very successful event.
It was, it was. It's also a 5K.
Did you run it?
I ran the shorter one, yes.
Okay. Way to go, TP.
I can't run long anymore. So it goes. It was, it was a nice day, it was a nice day. No, it's a great event, and it's a great organization, and, and the connection between that, and the opportunity that Woodlake provides our students for field trips and exposure to all kinds of natural things is really cool.
Lots of natural things.
Well, thank you, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have anything from their various committees, assignments, liaisons, Ms. Baraki?
I have a couple.
Are you the chair of something new?
I'm not, holding, holding steady.
Thank...
Goodness, Crystal. Reset the counter.
I did have a couple of things, though, just, and maybe it is actually more of a fit in the suggested future agenda, I just say them now. One is just hoping for an update at some point on our work to do a visual and substantive land acknowledgement in the individual building sites around the district. I know that's something that has been in process for a while. And then the second thing is probably more related to the calendar committee, and just thinking about district holidays. I know Eid came up as one that students actually came to us requesting that we consider for the future, and then I know with Juneteenth now being a federal holiday, how that fits in in particular to our summer school calendar. It's something I'm just curious to hear how the committee is thinking about those for the calendars moving forward.
Yes, so the calendar committee will be meeting again, I believe, January, February, March, thankfully. Eid this year, one is during summer, and the other is a Friday night going into Saturday, and so that is helpful with our calendar, because there isn't school. We have already created a summer school draft calendar plan that will not begin on Juneteenth, and so it would begin on a different day, and so the decision or discussion about that being an official school district holiday has pay and contract implications, but we have created a situation where it is not, not going to be a summer school day to begin as we examine that. And then land acknowledgement, I know Jennifer is working with Sarah Jespersen, and they have contracted and are in the final plans of mockups, and are looking to have that be with us in the near future. So we'll have some, some more definitive updates coming, coming soon.
Thank you.
That's great.
So just on that note, though, too, is there anything around like Native American Heritage Month, or?
I just got my text launching in November, which I believe is Native American Heritage Month.
It would be...
That is exactly correct.
All right. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share? I don't have anything myself. All right, that brings us to future meeting dates. Our next meeting is Monday, September 19th at 7:00 PM, right here, with an opportunity for public comment for those who sign up. Following that, we are into October, October 3rd, regular board meeting. I believe for the 19th, Ms. Banks-Cupcho, you will be elsewhere, so that moves my, my potential employment yet further, that's okay. It's, I knew that was, I knew your, your absence was coming, so we'll get there, we'll get there.
Well, and historically, we have continued on with the employment of board members.
Yeah, right, I mean...
That's what I was going to ask, like, if you are actually not allowed to do anything until we take action?
No, I think, I think, I think we're okay, I just can't get paid, which is fine. I mean, one of them is a sports official, so I've served as a sports official for volleyball, this is like parent thing, but also potentially spring sports, like baseball or softball.
But it doesn't allow up to the cap?
Yes, but it has to be approved on a yearly basis with all of the board members present, so...
A majority of the full board is present.
And we do see our subpool a little bit shallow, and Mr. Polis' presence is looking more attractive every day.
We don't know, right? I...
That was mostly my concern, was making sure that we were not taking you out of our subpool.
Well, I, right, I need, I only responded last year because it was listed as, as a critical shortage, so if we are not critically short, then people don't need me, and that's quite all right. So we'll, we'll see on that, but October 3rd seems like a great time to take action, if we can. We've already covered, Ms. Baraki brought up some suggested or future agenda items. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share for potential items?
Uh-uh.
Okay, well, with that, that brings us to the next item, which is a closed session as allowed by Minnesota statute 13D.05 for labor negotiation strategy discussion. Before we take vote on that, I just to inform people watching at home, if we do move into closed session, once we emerge from it, what we do is we return to open session, and then we adjourn the meeting. There was no substantive action taken after the closed session, so if you're watching us on live stream right now, if we do vote to go into closed session, that will be the last action item that you would, you would need to see, so you don't need to hang by your YouTube channel. So with that, would anyone be so inclined to move us into closed session as allowed by Minnesota statute 13D.05 for labor negotiations strategy?
I move to closed. Go to closed session.
I'll take it.
Studious.
We have a motion by Mr. Carter and a second by Ms. Baraki. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the chair votes aye, and we will, after a brief recess, we will move into closed session. Have a good night, everyone. We are in recess.